What is up?
Oh, which one is that?
Which one is it?
He's got to have the surfboard.
They're not going to stay in all of their buildings and offices today. They might, they might.
I saw somebody post something about that. I thought maybe he was going to go somewhere.
Office board.
Is that one?
Yeah, yeah.
That started today.
Yeah, so I used to say it when I...
All minor county municipality schools asked today.
No, they just...
Yeah, they weren't going to stop that one. They think all schools have to have it.
Our kids don't, our kids sit on, know where they're at. Kids, where's the kids know where they're at.
Our minor counties.
Our staff indoors, outside. Where we align with the health care system, we're going to ask for child.
Somewhere else. Sitting there with no man.
Right, but it should, it should wait.
Yeah, all are secondary, that's right.
So some of them are like, why is it water?
No.
No, that's just kind of a... My house is America. I do sell days. Both sides. Well, that's what I would have done.
Push them back another two weeks. And so he's doing... Last year, they said, how long does it take?
Yeah.
It's six. This room is rented at seven, so we gotta make it.
Yeah, because I was looking so forward to it.
Yeah. I just rented it five minutes ago. I'll leave my 15% without...
Hundred.
Hundred?
I get a discount.
We take a little while for that.
Get Jake's...
Wasn't it six thirty you did it?
Yeah, six thirty. All right.
I don't have to do anything.
Oh, come on.
Talking about August 3rd, going to watch the workshop. The agenda is number one, reviews, goals, objectives, and proper documentation. I believe that this refers mostly to review, but also then what was anyway, reviewing goals and objectives.
You couldn't have read that better?
Is this something you were going to speak to?
I mean, I know Heather and I have gone back and forth, and I think that I thought the board, the majority of the board had agreed that we should have some sort of process around reviewing goals. I just agree here, right? You don't, you know, I know it's different. There's contracts and stuff that's a little bit different, but it still does a need that you don't have growth. Everybody has growth, right? So I think if you, if you give people objectives for the year that you know that they need to work on, they need to meet those objectives over the years. And their, their review or raise, and when we can, when it's not part of the contract, should be based on how their performance is.
Well, it's a place right now. It's not...
Don't we have a performance appraisal review?
I've never seen anything, and we have given out raises. I don't know how many times since June.
See, this is a reuse too.
Didn't we just do the other thing last year?
Name raises.
No, no, no.
I thought you implemented some.
I gave them. I gave her Heather a tool, and I think she tweeted it, but I just don't know where it is at.
Are you using it?
I use it.
We used it, we used it last year, and we're just about to schedule, we're moving here, I'm not just going, but I told him that I wanted to use what he used to, I think, gave it to Jake or something. I don't know.
Jake, I gave it to Jake?
I thought you said that anyway. I was going to ask you, I just said I wanted to do what you guys were doing so that it seems more in line. Ours was just kind of, it's okay. It wasn't ever...
The whole idea is, this isn't to, to make it a bad experience for the employee. It's for them to succeed. So at the end of the year, you wait till the whole year, and then you say to Heather, Heather, you're, you're struggling with this, you didn't do a good job of this, you didn't do this. And this is the first time she's hearing it. That's a bad thing. So you meet, you meet periodically throughout the year, and you review these objectives together. And say, you had some big target for Jake, and because of millions of circumstances that were not Jake's fault, you have the ability to alter his midway and say, wait, Jake, this has changed now because we have an report or other issue. So you're not going to let Jake fail an objective because it was on his ability to get it done. We changed course on what we wanted him to work on. So it's about succeeding. That whole thing is about working together to succeed. And if you meet every quarter and you review the, your performance objectives, everyone should succeed again, and there's no surprises after you, right? That's really important, just so everyone succeeds.
But that, I mean, that's corporate. That is absolutely corporate, and that's the way we diet. You know, I don't care if I'm a scientific or a zirax, you're aware.
And June, it gives you documentation.
Every court.
Every quarter.
Yeah.
It gives you documentation that would help you legally also. If you want to terminate an employee for certain things, you're going to have a track of...
You got a proper documentation.
Right, of, of, yeah, of reviews and follow-up. So I think you probably do a little bit of this now. I just wanted to, I just was trying to say there are better ways to do it and meet. And when you meet, for this meeting that is designated for this, it's not anything else.
practical criteria, yeah.
Right, this is, we're going to meet on your, your performance plan for this year, performance objective, whatever you want to call it, and you just, it's trying to get everyone to succeed. That's all this is, a tool that we succeed and the employee succeeds. And it allows you as a manager, Jake, and Heather and others, to alter it during the year the way we do it. If you feel it's not going to work, you know, if they had to do, you know, build 20 houses and they only built 10, but you had six other things that changed their plan, you could now change that objective to build 10, you know, if you feel that everything they're doing. You know, so that's really what it is. So I just asked Heather about it, and because, you know, not, I'm not saying with this staff, but other staff in the past, we had struggled, and then when we want to talk about it, we have nothing to back up what we struggled with. So that's...
When I said I, I think what I ultimately came up with, I don't, I think everyone was okay with it, but they still weren't like, so I'd rather just use what, what you have. That's where I'm living at.
Well, I don't believe, I don't even know what you have.
They go like that.
You guys all approved it. It was...
I sent, I sent, yes. I sent to Heather, she tweaked it into their own version, and she did send it to the board, and I think we liked it.
We did too.
But I don't remember what.
I don't remember, yeah.
It was approved, and I used it. But just Daryl and I haven't met yet, and so I just thought it'd be better to just use that one because there's obviously, it's not just me coming up with it.
Wasn't the one that, that you had, wasn't that just for the office? That's what I thought, that's what I remembered. I didn't know we had...
Right, Jake, Jake's a little different because of, you know, he's got step-ups and things.
Yeah.
That's what he's got to do. But just the review piece, he can still, and he probably doesn't now, and I don't even know. I need to speak to him, but he, he may already do a process where he's actually physically writing up a review of people's strengths and things they need to work on. He may already be doing it.
I do not, I absolutely don't disagree that we should. It's finding the time.
Yeah.
I mean, I couldn't find time for lunch today until 10:00 survived, so.
That's crazy.
Was it good? Wasn't it nice good?
No, not really. Not great, but it was something. But yes, no, it's something we, yeah.
And if we put this form together, it really makes it easy. It doesn't make it hard to, you know, and, and you can even do some that are for everybody that's the same. So like, one or two objectives are identical for the office staff, and then there's one that's just personalized, so it doesn't become that hard.
Oh, right, you tweak them to the, right.
Yep.
Yeah. I mean, we used to have when we break it down, whether it was union or engineers or, you know, all the way up.
Yeah, the union one, I mean, ours, the ones in the back here are obviously all part of, it's made part of the union contracts, so keep some sort of memory. We ever change that, because that's what reviews, their step increases are based upon. Any quantitative, or supposedly quantitative measurement in their, in their review that's come up with subjectively, so it's kind of a weird process. I'd rather have it. It says you got to get a certain number on there, but you come up with the numbers.
It doesn't necessarily...
Subjectively, but...
Well, why did I get a three? I should get a five, but you have nothing to back it up.
Right, yeah, neither side of it.
Yeah.
It says it is what it is, so I've never really liked those forms, but, you know, we've never had a, we've never come up with anything better, I guess, or we haven't.
I just think...
Well, I mean, there's questions of my own, so what are next steps? Do you want us to bring, have Heather bring that document back to our meetings?
Yes, I would definitely...
There's two parts. I don't think it's just for the overall office staff.
Well, no, it should be.
I think Jake's talking about...
What Jake's talking about, part of that is what we had discussed about the meetings in terms of once a month, you're going to do over things. Those are things where they have written down, or you have written down with them what you expect out of those over the year. And we can be talking about or letting them down, how are they really progressing, are they net this or net that? I mean, those are things that we've talked about. We don't have time to do it, but those are things we've talked about. In terms of the office staff, that would go along with her and the mine evaluation. Would be, be of her, how is, how is she doing individually also in dealing with...
Correct, so you could, you could fill out the objective form for Heather and Jake, right? But you may say, have an executive session or however you do it, or you can talk about, hey, I really think Heather does this well, but I think she needs to work on this. You can create an objective for her, which makes she need to, you know, she needs to understand HR laws more, or codes. We can put that in there. We can, you know, whatever those types of things that we're going to do.
Well, exactly, that's kind of...
And then, you know, there's timelines. And in objective one, you say by June 30, 2022, Heather, blah, 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 blah. So you put a timeline she needs to do by. It's an easy thing once you start it. Jake's right, an agency struggle no matter where you are.
Yeah.
But it's so important to make the time because it protects you as a leader, and it supports the staff, and it's a whole big idea.
It supports them, and it helps them grow. It just helps people grow.
There's nothing worse than when you sit down at the end and do your review, and you hear all the things, and you're like, I didn't know that, I think I did this well.
Exactly.
So that's...
How often are your reviews?
Should we give them a...
We were, you know, like, we have the big one, but then we had also had like three before that, where we would revisit and see if anything we could change. The reason, you guys already approved, you already approved the document I'm using. But what I wanted to bring it up is because it seemed disjointed. Then I took the original one we used to use, and then I kind of took a few things from Jerry's, and it just, I don't know, I just think it can be better, that's all.
While then, I'll put it on an agenda, and that's what I...
The property, whatever it is, the district, school district, we have evaluation, basically, observation supplies required, and sitting for the final evaluation. It was once a year, we made the goals and objectives, and we had basically three or four of those. And there wasn't, there wasn't the progress report coming through every year, but there was the evaluation, how did I meet that, or did I not meet that? How would I change that in the passing period? So I, I am used to being once, as opposed to quarterly or quarterly, trimester.
And once is good at the end of the year, but why do you quarterly as so when you don't fail? Like, you can't surprise someone at the end of the year. So they did an observation. The one I sent her, it also had a competence, competency inspection, which I also think that would be good for us to take on. I talked about, you know, professionalism, building relationships, managing change. All those things are important things that you should evaluate for people, right? You know, so do you manage change? How do you...
People forget to, like, you kind of need to revisit those objectives so that you don't forget.
Yeah.
Oh, really? You just don't want people to fail. That's, that's the biggest thing.
Exactly, major, that's true.
Because you can't sit down at the end of the year and give someone a bad review when they didn't have the opportunity to have a conversation.
Exactly, completely agree. I mean, you grow people, you help them, you support them, or something like that.
If you want someone to fail their review, then what you should have them working for you because you have some, you, you know, you have these people here because you were working for you, you trusted them, so get them to thank us.
Yeah.
But the, we had one, we had the observation...
This is a workshop.
Because they're observing you. So you can...
Yeah, I, I'd really like to go over that.
Me too.
And definitely more involved, so...
All right.
I think the timeline is, is important. Like you said, we, we need to have a six-month review and then define the variation.
At least.
And then, Jake, that would be minimal.
And with, with...
Jake's quarterly, right?
Maybe, you know, real...
I like the quarterly until we get a better understanding of it. And, you know, maybe just do quarterly for the first year, and then everybody, when you're attuned to it, then you can go six months.
Well, they are, they are, I already got...
That the office is, but that's all.
So Don, is there any concerns from, if we did this with Jake's team that has, you know, a different type...
And the union?
Well, I think the village is small enough. There's not, you don't have that many employees. I think you should use the same evaluation and criteria, whether it's DPW, union, or office. Because raises, you know, what the union gets, the non-union gets for raises, and it's all tied together anyhow. So I would use the same form. Jake doesn't like the existing one anyhow. It's with this number system, it's...
Yeah.
You know, it's, you know, and then you just have to, you got to run it by the union and get them to buy into it.
Exactly.
And do a memorandum of understanding to change that part of the, change that part of the union contract. My recollection is, I did bring the employee handbook with me, but I think there's a whole section in the employee handbook too about reviews. So whatever you're going to do, you need to have it reflected in the employee handbook. Because you're probably look and see what's in the employee handbook now to make sure, you know, you don't need to reinvent the wheel if a lot of the stuff is, is in there.
And I could also use the review forms as part of a, throughout the year review process, and then make that a system and document that, and still use the same form that's in the union contract.
That's a good point.
See, I like that.
That's a conversation, really, I always view the review as this conversation.
Sure.
And this is a primer or something that...
I like that.
You know, the, the conversation, part of the review is the best part of the whole thing. That's the, where I get the most done. Documenting stuff is something you turn, and it goes in a pile, and we can go look at it. If you're going to have a conversation and hopefully get on the same page, or at least understand each other better and work together better, it's better. I said better three times in one sentence.
But there was, I think there was still maybe some documentation. It can't be, can't be where you say, well, you've done, and we just, documentation is sticking, and it's all gone. Your conversation still should be documented.
Oh, yeah, no, it certainly is. Certainly is. There's a, we ran, there was a lot, but there's, they said we could utilize the form that everybody uses for the...
And then transfer it...
...trading over throughout the year, and then, you know, hey, and, you know...
So the final thing, wouldn't affect what the union has already had, so we just document on the system Heather uses, and at the end, it'll be on the last book. So if that works out well, I think, then you don't have to mess with too much on that end.
Yeah, let's take the workshop and work, just work on that.
Correct. So that was the one I sent him. All right.
Yes, and send, yeah, send what you have to all of us again because I can't. You don't remember it.
It's good, you know, it shouldn't be real complicated either. I mean, you only hear the first two sentences of it. After this, anyway, so...
Well, no, I, you don't want it too complicated. But to help people grow, to help people grow, do their jobs better, just show them off. And we're not, we all were all brought up the same way or had the same values, so I think that's, at least get one document for everybody.
Yeah.
So at the beginning of the year, like, you're in that there would be goals that were established, and then you would need that quarterly evaluation kind of thing.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, quarterly you would need to make sure you're on target with your objectives, right?
A evaluation of how they're doing.
But like Jake said, those meetings are really about a discussion that you document, but it's about the discussion, and it gives the manager and employee the ability to change and tweak objectives. So they meet, that's the idea, so it's just everyone being successful, right? And even if there's people that you want to identify as a successor to Heather or Jake, that's also, you know, you've got to have a great team, and you know that what is your goal? Is it, you know, someday you want to have my position? Would you like to do this, or would you like to do this? You know, you give them growth opportunities through this process too. So the people that are really shining their stars, they need to be documented, and the people that struggle with it. But it does work, works well for us. Yeah, I was introduced to it when I came to the outside, and I fought in it, because you'll never have the time to do it, but once you finally did it and everything, when you didn't do it at the end of the year, sitting down to try to write everything, you're like, oh my God, last minute.
That was, yes.
But when you meet across the board, it's really easy to do that. And, and I felt relationships got better with staff over the years because they weren't shocked. We would have a number system in the beginning, and that, that was terrible. What do you mean, I'm a three, I'm a five? Well, why are we a five? Okay, and why did I give you a three? I don't really, I can't really... So when we looked at the system, it was actually very beneficial.
No, I completely agree. I don't care how small the business or how large it is. That's what you really, and that's, you just help everybody that's there. There's not a negative that goes along with this. I mean, that's why I really like it.
Yeah.
Good.
Growth opportunities, just call them growth opportunities, okay? Correct. Right, if you don't, yes, you're not meeting your objectives, it's a system. You need, yes, you have to put a performance improvement plan together, or you need to use disciplinary action, or you have to move someone out of the organization. I mean, we're all here to...
Yes.
Yeah? Yeah? All right, I think we beat that one up pretty good.
Yes, we did, we did find you.
Ten minutes, I read the...
Human resources officer, going for days.
Who's that?
Who is that? Human resources officer, he is...
Heather.
I, I don't know if we've ever put together anything that's formally in the handbook or in terms of what the responsibilities of the human resources officers are.
All right.
There's a lot of things, I have them here regarding the position of village manager and village clerk. There's blending two together, and it details typical work activities and what they need for performance knowledge and skills. I have one here, but I don't know if we've ever put that together in terms of...
So, yeah, I'd like to see with all the things, because you don't also, as I just said, about people failing, do you give, Heather has all that role. Do, is there things that she doesn't know or not? Of, you know, you don't want to put her in, I'm not speaking for you, I've spoken to her, but...
But not in that position, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a fine line in the position, and there's, could be legal ratifications to wrong things going on, or decisions. And so, so as I say, is that something she wants to continue education for? That's something that's more than she needs to continue education for? Or those are, that would be an objective to talk about, but, and, and again, I'm not speaking to what she knows or doesn't know, because I don't know that, but you got to really make sure you know the stuff that you're sending out or talking about. It's a, it's a big deal, so...
Do we have EAP? Do you think we have, there's a need for it?
We do get some people asking for it. I don't, I wasn't here, but I think, you know, I think it was, that, it was taken. I think we had it, and then they got, whoever, decision it was, got rid of it.
Yeah, our former clerk asked at a meeting of the people, of the employees, when everybody was all together in the room, anybody want, anybody ever use EAP? Anybody have a need for it? Nope, okay, we'll get rid of it.
No, it really...
That's what happened, it was like, that's probably not the situation or the setting that you would ask, but...
That did happen. I guess, I do.
You know, the, the reason for EAP, it makes, rather than be a human resources officer, and that's the, if EAP is used, then that's a way to get an employee to come out with their problems, whether it's alcohol, drugs, monetary divorce, or whatever they might be going through, gives the employee a chance to, for betterment, for another opportunity with a timeline for it to get better, to get over what's, what the problem is. And it, and it covers a large range of behavior, behaviors. And EAP, at the phone company we use that, and was very successful with that. I mean, if you notice, suddenly an employee is just not, you know, how he or she used to be. You know, and there's problems, and it's showing up in their work. You know, the, Heather or Jake could say, you know, let's have a little talk here. If you got a marital problem, or whatever you have going on, I'm here to help you. And EAP also gives all kinds of resources for recovery.
Yes.
And it should make for personal problems.
Yeah, no, I, I think...
If it's affecting your work, then, then that's...
For sure, but I don't know.
We should use all the tools we can.
I think he, he is very...
Use all the tools you can.
And it could be used by Heather and Jake, and, you know, it could even...
I think that's a good tool.
We could even use it for us.
I don't think, I don't think it...
This is a little different. That's a great thing to add, and I think we should add it, but this is about her position, and that's what I think we have to ensure, through this is. She's designated a human resources office. To be fair to Heather, she needs to know what that entails.
Exactly.
What's the job description for that? And what are her boundaries? When you wear two hats and you become an HR person, things have to be confidential. You know, it doesn't mean you talk to someone in the office when it's about another employee and each other person, and that role.
Oh, yeah.
So, so in all fairness to Heather, she needs to know what the expectations are, what the employee handbook says, and, yeah, what, what does it entail?
Well, I've spoken to some other clerks and Dorothea, and not just her. I've had a discussion with most of them, and it's generally the clerk who does the HR stuff. And I, I just, I, I'm comfortable with it. I think that I do a good job at it. And, but I just, I think, I think it needs, needs to be spelled out, like, what exactly...
Exactly, yeah.
I can ask, and what exactly falls under me, and...
So did you have HR experience in a camera? I don't remember that one either.
I worked in service, in HR, yeah. So, and I'm already doing most of those things, and I think sometimes I handle it, and sometimes I don't. So I just, and when I spoke to Dorothea, everything should really be coming through my office because in terms, I'm the record keeper, and I'm, I hold all records, so...
So it should come to you, it should come to you when, when it's not handled. So I think that manager is always responsible to solve the situation. Once it can get to that point of resolving it and escalating, you bring in HR. But if HR is making your, your, your department's decisions, that's not what you want to hear. You want to be able to come in, what's supportive of you. So that's how an HR person in my mind would work. The leaders still have to, to manage a situation because you don't want every employee always go, I'm just going to go to HR, I just don't want to go to HR. You want to be able to, like, resolve those issues as a department, and then, and then you would assist on if needed, but...
But issues of like, it's just, it's best... But it's issues of like, um, it's just, it's best that both managers are working together. And not all situations, I'm not saying that, when you talk to somebody, you don't need to be in there, I'm not saying that. But if there's something that is out of the ordinary and or, you know, something that we don't normally, it's just best to always kind of bounce ideas off each other.
Yeah, I think that's typ- typical good practice, but if Jake is sitting in with a disciplinary issue with his staff or you vice versa. If you use each other, that person's just silent. You're not part of the conversation, you're just as a witness to protect both the employee and the manager. And then you're silent and the same if he, he, he did it in the opposite, if he was.
Well, and sometimes when, you know, Jake and I will, if we have someone that we have to discuss to, sometimes I, I talk, sometimes he does. So I just think, I just need a little bit of guidance on what is me and what's not.
And I think that's fair and I think that you and Jake, as the leaders of the, of these departments, you guys also cannot send separate messages to the same employee. So it's important that you get on the page, on the same page and not on a topic, you know what I mean? And if you disagree, that's okay and that's what the board or Daryl's for.
Right.
But if you're telling an employee something opposite of what his manager is telling him, that also could be a bad thing. So I think.
That's a terrible thing.
I think we could start off by, um, you know, who didn't, just, do we have a job description for the, the HR piece? Cause I've never seen one. So how do we say she's an HR person and it's just a pretty random one?
I think many of the policies, though, they, that would typically or traditionally be an HR function in our policy or handbook or whatever. They would, they would go back to the clerk, the village clerk would do this or the village clerk would do that. So in by, finals by default, sometimes some of the typical HR functions are assigned to the clerk. There's still many suggestions that. You know, well, that would fall back to the clerk, you know? Maybe under this title or under this heading of, um, human resources officer, you know? We can delineate some of those, even though they're in the handbook, like the F B D specifically.
Oh, it'd be good to have clarity. I think in others, especially I think about notes, instructors' notes and things. Um, those are in a handbook. Fair enough, so it's something else and you gotta head down. So we better have something else other than what's in the policy manual.
Yeah, so then what is our, you know, what, we have to know our own policies for, right? And so Heather would need to know really well as an HR person. So if we have someone that's heard of work, our HR works out, reaches out to sort of what it says. Is there any way that this person could work at a different department where people like do the right? You don't want people out of work, you want them at the job, right? For multiple, so then it's up to managers across the agency, yes, I need someone to file, I need someone to, that would be my person. And if you can't do that, then the person obviously out of work. You have to be consistent, obviously, with your, with your decisions.
How you treat everything, right?
Right, you just want it to look fair and it doesn't mean that when you said yes to this guy, the workload's there the second time. And there's also people that may not have the skill set, you need some, Jake needs computer work on his spreadsheet. Some people may not have the ability to do that because they're not good at computer. So, you know, you review on a case by case basis, if you make a decision, if you can truly, the best interest of the village and the department brings someone working on duty and it's productive, then that makes sense.
In our village, our, our village, our old policy manual six thirty-six gave that, uh, traditional or transitional duty program or likely assignments. Said the department head will determine if there's a likely assignment. And our new policy four point three zero, in the, whatever it's, the employee handbook or whatever now, it's been said, carried, carried that forward. It said that would be the department head. So it didn't give that function to HR, it shouldn't go to HR and someone said, say that, but it says it's the department heads.
Well, and one time, one time we handled it where it went to me and one time it didn't, so it's just, I just wanted.
Jake's right, the, the, the employee handbook is called transitional duty program. And it doesn't say department head, it says the employee's immediate supervisor. May determine if job assignments are available. Now, if, and it would, it's, like what Jerry said, if Jake doesn't have an appropriate job, but there might be something in the office, then it would seem to me that it would be Jake reaching out to Heather to say, hey, do you have anything? But I, it seems to me it's more appropriate for the immediate supervisor to determine what's the appropriate light duty job than some HR officer. Because that goes more to job function, which HR traditionally in my mind anyhow is they deal with hiring people and filling out all that paperwork, they deal with payroll, they deal with training. But they don't deal with the day-to-day management of.
You just think of the one word, support. They support a manager.
Which is what I'm trying to say.
Management support.
Just, yes, it should be on.
They support, but they don't throw decisions.
No, but it's, it's still, it's still best, it's still in the best interest of everybody to at least come to me and talk to me about it. I'm not saying I'm gonna have like some decision on it, but I also have to be, I have to make sure I have everything in order. We have to make sure that the village is being protected as well as the employee. There are things that HR would have to do with that.
Yeah, HR looks to see that the processes are fair, equitable, and all, so that's fine, but the inner pieces of it are managed.
Absolutely.
If you Google HR manager duties, you'll get the whole deal right there.
That's from two thousand seventeen, see the top corner? No, I'm just kidding, I can't see that.
It just says what the duties of an HR manager are and it's about ten of them. What does an HR manager do?
I'll bring an HR job description tomorrow.
HR manager's skills and qualifications.
But, right, it's about being fit, what Heather's saying.
It's a whole different.
One way, this time one way, she just needs, needs to be clear.
I think it's only if you compile, you can print it or something, look at that.
So let's add that to that workshop, maybe before Kelly's.
If your, if your managers are doing a job, you really don't need HR.
That's true.
Not with a small employee base. If managers are doing a good job, you really don't need HR.
Right, they're just really here to support and what they should know on EAP and reality and, and codes associated to certain things. And that, if that's something she wants to continue going, it's a good thing. And then when Jake does, can't get to a resolution with a staff, you pulled in a HR representative to be a neutral partner. Remember, HR represents not just the manager, represents the employee and the manager. So that's what it's about, it's a supporting mechanism to the organization and that's it.
It's just, Heather, isn't there somebody that you call with situations sometimes? Didn't we sign somebody up to?
Yeah, but we're probably not gonna be using them again, but, cause we have, it comes, yes, we have someone.
So you can ask HR questions?
Mm-hmm.
And then you can, you can.
We're gonna ask them, cause it came through.
Yeah, so Heather doesn't have to be the HR person, she could.
She's like.
Get answers from a qualified HR person.
They're just support to me, but, no, it, it's just, I just want consistency, that's all. I've, I've handled it with one person and then not with another and it just, it's confusing for me, that's all. Help, I'm sorry, not handled, help.
So she's confused, our job is to form a, I'm confused.
There you go.
So we'll have a layout where our corporate expectations that we think are. And again, I know, think of the word support, it says her role, she says she's a support. And if there's like, um, you know, we're gonna start doing this process across the village, you know, a memo can come from HR because it represents everybody, you know? Those type of things, you know, um, no, shut, we need proof of your COVID vaccination card. That can come from an HR person to the whole, like, you know, those are the type of things I think of, not, not intervening and.
And we're a small office, like I've used Jake multiple times when I need him to do interviews, I want him to sit in, hey, will you listen in? Same thing for me, if you need, you just be a witness. We've also talked about that multiple times, it saves, it protects us as well as the employee. I don't wanna just, I don't wanna have even one of my staff group people alone without Jake or without someone else. Because it protects me, it protects them. So, we're a small office and there's nothing wrong with us working together. I'm not saying I need to be involved in everything, I'm just saying consistency is all, that's all.
Yeah, if you're not involved in everything, that's a good thing, that means the things are working, so we want them to work. So, all right, we don't need to beat it anymore, we know what we gotta do.
Yep.
Add that to the workshop, it's gonna be a long one.
Well, wait a minute.
You also need, under New York Village Law, the duties, the duties of the, of the village clerk are specifically set for it. And HR responsibilities is not one of them.
Well, in Monroe County it is. In Monroe County, everybody does it, all the Evan village, but it's hard.
Heather, do you want, I'll give you section four dash four oh two of the New York Village Law.
Can you make it into a paper plan issue?
You know, so.
I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm just.
Well, you've done this in the past. I try to say what the law says and you say, oh no, this is what it really is. So if you want to be the village attorney, you can be the village attorney. But could I finish? Thank you. But there's a catch-all in subsection I that says, shall also perform such other duties not inconsistent with his office. It shall be determined by resolution of the board of trustees. So if you want to make the village clerk the HR officer, you have to do it first by resolution. You have to take a resolution for it. You know, and I would suggest that you not take that resolution unless and until you've got.
Delineate.
Delineate what, what that person's duties.
And that would mean changing the description and everything, so.
Yeah, okay.
Don, I apologize, I wasn't trying to cut you off, I just wouldn't, when we, when you and I talk about things, I just wish we had talked about this before. You know, that's all. I'm not asking you to be the HR manager, I'm not, it's just all, they maybe had a resolution and we didn't, or maybe there was one before, I don't know. You know how it is, when someone new comes into a job and there's not one there before, you just kind of take over what has been done.
But this is good, there's no need to get, this is good, there's no need to get upset because, right? We should be able to have hard conversations. Chrisy and Jake, he hated me a week ago, now we're friends again. Come on!
You don't know what's going on, dude.
We don't want to, guys and girls, we, I think Billy came in to say something, let's let him speak for a minute and then we'll go on. Rather than have him sit for the whole meeting.
My wife, a little reminiscent.
Only for him, because we don't really have a public forum.
Right.
At our workshops, but just because of you.
I'm only here on a courtesy call.
As a former mayor, anything goes. Courtesy, actually, why don't you sit in this seat, get out there, oh.
Then he's gotta turn it that one way. He really looks at all.
I'm here to clarify what I think is, um, something about August twentieth. When you are scheduled, or you, if you had accepted the invitation to go to the Ukrainian FET for the incoming Ukrainian officials.
I would love to come personally, but I will be on vacation out of this state.
Well, let me refresh the invitation. Have they received copies? Okay. The whole board has been invited to, uh, a function on the twentieth at, and this is why I'm here. The timing is something that nobody clarified to me and I'd like to try to clarify it to you. Uh, at one time, we were talking about six thirty PM. And I sent an email to Heather stating that it probably should be six o'clock, six PM instead of six thirty. The only reason for this differential is that Friday night, uh, devoted to fish fries at the cultural center. So when it was explained to me, they said they'd like to get the bulk of the patrons out of the way so that the proper decorum can be exhibited for the Ukrainian officials. So, once again, if you want to come early, like six o'clock, and partake of a little dinner, come on, you're welcome. If, if it's your feeling that you want to show up at around six thirty or whatever and issue the proclamation and go home. I, I don't have anything to do with any of that, I'm just here to ask you, to invite you again to the festivities and say that your proclamation will be issued at six thirty. So whatever your pleasure is before that, more than welcome.
Dinner on you?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
So if you want to come at five thirty and really eat, go ahead. It's not only fish, it's Ukrainian foods.
Rogus, man.
Yep, pierogis and hulky or galunki or, I guess you're not allowed to imbibe the day of wine. So anyways, that's my reason for being here tonight, so thank you for allowing me to tell you this. If you have any questions, I'll answer them otherwise I'm going home.
On that invite, I do not need, uh, do we, um, call to say that we are coming? Or do you want us to just show up or?
Because you've all been invited here and you're more than prepared, so just come when you want to. And we will have introductions made and so on before the proclamation. You are issuing the proclamation, right?
You make it down. August twentieth?
Yes, yeah, it's a Friday night. We have the invitations, Heather, we have the invitations. There's a proclamation.
What do you like there?
Um, I, I think, I think we'll have to talk back tomorrow, I think, um, I think he's still gonna test people.
You're okay then?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much and good night.
Thanks, Billy.
Bye-bye.
All right, just removing down to number three.
Kind of talked about the professional competency, just adding it to the review process and then you kill that. Yeah, I think we kill that, I think just being, we just have to do better and that's everybody about being professional and kind of wanting to. Everybody, like, just yelled at Heather, you know, he probably could have had a softer approach. So, so I think.
He's ignoring you.
I think we just. I just think we just need to keep that in mind, right? Where we all do a lot differently, we're on the same scene, we are on the same scene, we can have different opinions and whatever. I think this originally, where I put this, wanted this policy was, we talked about it when, as staff have gotten up to the podium and, you know, attacked the board members and vice versa, whatever it is, or, um, I just think, yes, and most of them are village residents or not, if not all of them. So they, they act as two, you know, they have two hats, as a resident and, and an employee, but I still think, um, it's just not appropriate. And I think there's a better time, it can be at any other time to discuss it, if we want to discuss it. Um, so that was one and then I think, um, we discussed board members or family members of board members interacting with the ladies. We already had that discussion, but we never had policies or written out or guidelines written about this stuff. So it just doesn't matter, you know, that's where I think.
We get force of mention and, uh, everybody take it to heart, you know, and then more than update, we need to create them.
Exactly, but maybe that's what.
We, I think we. With the sewer thing.
Yeah, I agree.
And there were our feelings and, um, you know, not only within the village board, but there also was within the village and the town. And those feelings still exist, as far as the town goes. I mean, we can all agree to disagree and, but that doesn't mean you're suddenly my enemy, we still have the support of the village.
And we can only, we can't control the town, but we can control what.
Yeah, and we did it very well. Yeah, and we did it very well.
How we treat each other here in this office, and how we treat each other, the staff, everything.
I agree, and it was a good lesson for us to learn.
So I don't know, I don't know. I think you guys at the time thought it was a good idea to put a, something in place if you don't, or just goes on to the next time that something happens. I just think there should be some sort of...
My two cents in this, I would tend to agree that in terms of... I know that employees of the village are, many of them are village residents as well. So when you open it up to village residents having the opportunity to speak, they take off one hat and put out another one. And I don't know if that is... I agree that that's probably not the way in which we should handle public decorum kind of thing. If you want to meet with any member of the board and express your opinions, which a couple of the people that have been very vocal and are both resident and also work for the village have done that. I mean, I've met with them, but to do so in a public forum kind of... Kind of puts a bad light, I think, on the village.
It degrades everything, just degrades everything.
When you're expressing an opinion and you express it to us on board, or listen, we have listened, to do that as a public forum, as now taking off that hat you have and putting on the citizen hat, then it becomes more nut, I don't think it's proper. Well, I would agree with that, I mean, there's certainly avenues for any employee to voice their concerns to the board. There certainly are, and I'm willing to listen, my office is open to listen to them, and I think that can be attested to by members of individuals. But I don't know if that necessarily provides them or gives them that license to stand as a representative of the village as well as a citizen. And that's my opinion.
Well, the village already, there is a policy in the employee handbook, six dash thirteen, off-duty social networking, where it says that if a position taken by an employee expresses a political opinion or an opinion regarding the village of Webster's positions or actions, the post must specifically note that the opinion expressed is the employee's personal opinion, and not necessarily the village of Webster's position. So I don't think you can, you can't, you can't, if the person, if the employee is also a village resident, you can't ban that person from going up to the microphone at a open comment section of the meeting. But you can require that they first disclose that they're an employee and that they expressly state that their opinion is theirs and not necessarily the village's opinion. And this goes on to...
It's a little different than what we talked about last time, John, just to put that out there.
Well, I don't, how would, with freedom of speech in this country...
I'm just saying, sir, you'd be different viewpoint, maybe a weekend and a half.
Well, you could, you could, well, look, you could have a policy that discourages it, but you can't ban it. So you could use the word that while the village discourages employees from, who are also village residents, from expressing opinions on village matters at a village meeting.
Right, and express an opinion, we have people stand up and call my name out and say, "Well, 'cause you're gonna vote," and direct just to me and Al. You only do that because people, other people on the board or other people talk, you don't know what I'm gonna do. You truly don't have any clue what my decisions are gonna be. So it's because of all this gibbering and talking behind people's back, but someone to intentionally yell or raise their tone to me as a board member, I don't raise my voice to them, I don't scream at them, I expect to say, "Well, that's what we're talking about, that's what happened." Someone's coming up and expressing their opinion in a common professional manner is much different than yelling or screaming and saying things.
Well, I think there was, and I don't know if it was carried forward into... You know, I haven't seen a, you know, we have this new employee handbook, which I'm not sure has been actually disseminated to the employees. You know, I have a PDF copy, I don't know if there's been hard copies given to employees, but part of the handbook is an acknowledgement by each employee that they received a copy of it. But that's another issue. But there always was another policy on meeting decorum that, to my knowledge, hasn't been rescinded. And part of that policy is, is, you know, you're not supposed to raise your voice, you're not supposed to use vulgarities. So, you know, if you already have that policy, you could have to have the person removed from the meeting. For that, well, that's different than telling them what they can and can't say. You discourage employees from commenting, but you can't ban them. But you can ban somebody raising their voice, pointing their finger at you, and you can ask that they be, that they leave the meeting, it's already a village policy.
Thank you for that.
But, you know, the other thing, the other part of this policy is that use your true identity. So if employees have posted comments on websites and social media anonymously, or they wrote them and they used somebody else's name, that's a violation of this policy.
They have, right, I haven't seen posts directly from employees, but I heard a wife's, a wife's close that has said on Webster's page that one board member was making a decision just to advance his political career. So I do wanna educate them, but that's not how the system works, you have to actually run for position in the election. But that, that's what I'm talking about, so those type of things are happening, and in this border, it happened many times where it got violated. I just don't, I don't understand why you can't remain your passionate and professional. So if you think we can't do that, then that's fine. I don't know an organization anywhere that you can come up and say, "Go ahead and rip your CEO in front of people." I've never seen that happen in any organization, but if you think you can do that, no, it's okay.
Well, I don't wanna know what you mean by rip your CEO. If they're yelling, screaming, using profanities, no, they can't do that.
They can't.
If they're, if they're, you know, again, if they're criticizing a board member for a vote they took or something like that, and they're a village resident, and they're doing it calmly, and they're perfectly, that's... You can't ban that, this is the United States of America. You know, and the other part of it is that, yes, you're an elected official. Part of being an elected official is you gotta develop a thick skin, because you're gonna be criticized.
John, you always gotta have a thick skin.
You do.
I was beat up the whole time.
I know, I understand that, but that's, that's sort of part of the, you know, that's sort of part of the game, though, is, you know...
Yeah, yeah, and it's not about me having a thick skin, it's really about me being professional.
Well, again, there are... There were instances in the past, under previous administrations, where people had been removed.
Well, I agree, coming to this seat.
Removed from the meetings.
And it's not one side, he don't get to rock, that's what he called it.
I might just interject real quick, I think one of the important things here is the first thing we talked about tonight, that the board talked about tonight, is the reviews of all the objectives of meeting that people had. I think if people have a chance to discuss things throughout the year and need be, and feel like they're being heard, they won't end up here. If they feel like they're being listened to, if they have, you know, something maybe disagrees and they just talk out, they can get a chance to see each other's side of things, I don't think people are gonna be here as residents 'cause we gotta take care of our work.
That is a great point, still, still, I'm still on behavior point.
Right, yeah.
Versus them coming up to employees, but I agree with that.
Yeah, no, that's, but that's up to the supervisor to tell them that, look, if they've got issues with something the board has done with it, feel free to contact any board member directly. I don't think any of you would object to that.
No, it needs to talk to them.
You know, but it, but, you know, if it comes up, it should be up to Jake or Heather or someone to tell them, "Look, you know, if you got a, if you got an issue with a particular board member, the board as a whole, contact them."
But if they show up in the meeting to talk, it's not my responsibility to do that, right?
Well, they really have a job. Good, isn't it? According to Tom, he said it's...
Again, if they're, if they're a village resident, then you can't, you can't, you can't ban them.
What are you begging Paul for, they're not gonna get money for us.
You're talking to Donna, right?
No.
So again, I know they're passionate, and they have the right to be passionate, just if we can corral. So maybe it is just a one-page little thing that just says, "Hey, this is how we represent ourselves," because you are still wearing the village shirt at the end of the day, the village logo, right? So just represent yourself in a professional way, that's, and that should be it, and that's the story. So if you don't wanna document it, maybe just communicate it, maybe just an email from Daryl to include the board and all employees, and this is our expectations, and emails, we shouldn't be putting exclamation points at random people, or we shouldn't do that here, just a general email to everybody. You know, disagree, do a respectfully email at a can, whatever it is, and we move on.
We should make it part of the employee handbook.
And that's fine, too.
There's somebody, so you need somebody to draft it.
Well, we don't have an HR personnel.
There is an email, I could get part of the employee handbook or the policy done and drafted.
And we will call HR Works.
And there's something in there, at the very end of it, dressing appropriately, but I don't know about... You can add into the employee handbook the meeting protocol stuff, too.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's not in there at this point.
It is not. Do we have one for guests? There's nothing on guests, so we have...
No, that's included in, anyone that addresses the board, if that's what you want.
That's a yes.
That's included.
So we do...
But someone's gotta take the bullet by the heart and usually draft something.
Need to update it in the handbook, right?
Okay, right now.
Heather's working, she's working on it right now.
Oh, not that, but the handbook is being updated again.
Is what?
Being updated, she said.
The handbook's being updated again.
So how long has it been since we did the handbook?
Only less than a year, but...
And staff, staff received the first copy?
They, we voted on it, but when we took, when Haley took over, they found a lot of problems with the handbook. So they're working on it.
Who's working on it, because?
Haley, Fryer, Scoon.
Do they have an endpoint, do they have a...
It just said being updated in the version of it, they went through it with their turn, with their team.
Has it been a year, she's saying?
Yeah.
I don't really know exactly, but we voted on it and accepted it.
I'm just...
Yeah, we did, yeah. We did.
Good.
All right, Jim. So, last thing, and clerk and treasurer appointments. Now, I thought, um, a good point should be for clerk, we should do it for the treasurer, because they were significant hand in hand. And I think that what they're looking for is an appointment that would go co-assigned, co-aligned themselves with the mayor election, rather than two years, the other four years. At least that's what I had been given, in terms of what's been asked for, my understanding of that, even if they're looking for a term of four years versus two years.
So was there a reason?
And I would let her speak to that, to then respond to it by not bringing this up.
This is not a call, John.
I don't, it's just something that I had, that Peter recommended to me, that a lot of places, I did call so many of the villages, and some of them are aligned with their mayor, and it just protects us a little bit, and it keeps longevity a little bit, we're not changing over so much, and really, that's the only reason I, I don't really have anything else. Just to wind the mayor, and then we're not every two years, it's kind of protects us a little bit.
So the difference, the thing that I struggle with, that every two years is just in a meeting, we just say, "Okay, you're reappointed," so it's not like you have to go through this huge thing, and I think along with the reviews, right? It protects you, it protects the village, right? So if people aren't doing their job well enough, if you're struggling, and we have this happen here to us in the past, you had to wait four years to make a change, that's, that's a lot to go through with your position, that someone isn't doing well. If you're doing your job well, and we have the reviews in process, it's nothing. Every two years, you're just, you know, you're just being reappointed, that's my view. And not saying there's anything currently wrong with this staff, but in the future, it really locks you into something long-term. You know, and it makes it very difficult, I don't know, you know, it's...
I think that's a past, past position, and the problem that may have, that existed was that there was no effort at correcting, okay? No attempt to correct and to make better, to keep, you know, keep the authority, if you will. There was a few analogies there. If you are looking at, okay, just like with any employee, if you find that there are certain things, I mean, there are goals and objectives, there's, these are a list of things that you are confident in doing in this position, and if you're not meeting those, then there should be an effort to improve those. Unless, and there was a significant personality, if you will, or whatever it was, conflict.
So imagine that was four years.
Yeah.
Correct, that's true. So I don't, I don't know, should a, should a elected mayor who's in for four years have that opportunity or not to pick and choose? That could be what happened. They come in, they say, "No, I don't wanna work with you, I don't wanna work with you," I pretty much quote unquote, "I'm fine." Not even after four years, and they could be out.
But you're just saying, you're just saying you, so this whole board's not the same four years, so it's a board that votes.
Yeah.
Correct?
The mayor, the mayor makes the recommendation, but the appointment is the board.
Yeah.
So the mayor couldn't come in just unilaterally, not reappoint a clerk. A board could, you know, it takes three, it takes three votes to do that.
So, however, most closely working with, you know, in terms of the working relationship on almost every basis could be, knowledge one, you know, heard at that point. Captain, not that it is. However, I mean, I, personally, I think that it should be a long, whether it's two years or four years, I think that the positions should outlast any elected official if they're doing their job in turn. In other words, I don't think that Heather should be locked in to necessarily my game here or whether someone else is here, you know? And so that two-year position certainly could go and...
Does it typically go on?
To be honest, I kinda let it go, I thought about when Peter brought it to my attention a while ago that when we were about to be reappointed, and... my attention a while ago, that when we were about to be reappointed, and I kind of like let it go, and Don had said there was probably a little bit more involved than changing it, so I let it go, and then you, he brought it up to me and said, is this something that you're still interested in, stop lying, and I said, okay, and, and I do wanna stay here, this is, I, I like it here, I care about this village, I might wanna move here soon, and it's something that, it does, I'm just gonna be honest, it does sting when a new mayor comes in, and it's happened several times now, where the neighbor's name comes in and they're out, and that's scary.
Well, it's not happened since you've been here.
No, not, well, not to this board, I think.
Yeah, you said seven, seven times.
No, Daryl, I'm saying, for other boards, other boards.
But I would imagine they, they have to have some sort of, you know.
Reasoning, they gotta have something.
No, they don't, you don't have to have any reason, and you are in favor of this, you don't have to have any reason.
If an appointment is a, you don't have to have a reason not to reappoint a clerk or treasurer, the nature of the, look, the nature of the job is political, as in the state of New York, that's the way they set it up, in fact, some, you know, you could have an elected clerk, you know, some towns have elected highway superintendents, you know, but, so I don't know, it's the nature of the beast, but the, the village law requires that if you're gonna change the term from four, two years to four years, it, it should be done by local law and it, and it's subject to a permissive referendum, um, so if, if you wanna, I don't wanna draft a local law and put it in front of the board and have it go to a public hearing if there isn't a consensus by the board, if, if that's not something you wanna do, 'cause that could be embarrassing to some people, so.
And I totally, I see.
I don't care one way or the other, Jerry's concerns are legit, because we went through that not too long ago, and clerks and treasurers are also officers, classified as officers of the village, and you literally can't get rid of an officer during their term unless they've committed a crime.
Exactly.
Or, you know, embezzlement, it's gotta be really, really serious stuff, the fact that they're not competent at their job, nope, that's not good enough, the fact that they decide they don't wanna improve their performance, no, that's not good enough, you know, so, um, so whatever you wanna do, it's fine, for the village, the town clerk is two years in Webster, the Webster town clerk is two years, they could make that to four years, but they haven't.
Well, their supervisor's two years, that's kind of odd, there was a line with the supervisor.
But it can, it can change, like you can change the supervisor to four years, too.
Which I should.
Because, um, originally, originally mayors were two years, too, but then at some point this village decided to make it four years.
That was with Jake, was it?
Nah, it was with, probably with his wife, not anymore.
Probably Holly.
The, the default for both villages and towns, I love, was always two years in the state law, but with the action to change it to four years.
So, so, so I don't really just, I don't, in my opinion, and everyone's disagreeing now, I don't see the reason to change it, it doesn't, uh, it's not like you're asking Heather to reapply, or, you know, or Marcia to reapply for their jobs or anything, or they have to go through the interview processes.
Just reappoint.
Yeah, you're just reappointing.
Yeah.
Um, so, and, and I, like, I try to make my decisions not always just on me, as you learned before, it is, is, it's not just about this group of people now, but it's many years past, and if you have someone that is not doing basically what Don is saying, and we've had a, an example in the village, we could move on, yes, we could move on from them, and it's not good.
Right.
So, I, I think it's simple, she does a good job, she does her job, there's not a, it's not.
Exactly.
Don said you gotta have thick skin.
I'll give a pair of any, I understand. Heather does a good job, I, I, I suppose, and I suppose if, if a board perceived, or a mayor perceived that there was gonna be a hostile takeover at the next village election, before you leave office, you, you change it to four years.
Oh, yeah, like when we ran, they remember, they eliminated our salary, and then the next meeting, the same board member voted to give it back, you know, oh, that was you too.
Cause of your example, you know, so if you just, if you just keep your.
Leave it.
And see how the political winds are blowing, like, you can, cause you can change it by resolution, too, it's a, it'd be still subject to a permissive referendum, but you don't have to do the local law route, you can do a very resolution, subject to permissive referendum.
And so we have that available, but. Now we're gonna have a super great review process in place, so everyone's gonna know that if no concerns, should be a no brainer.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna make everybody's life easier once it all is in place.
For sure.
Yeah, I really, I think it's a good idea.
Anybody else, anyone other item, if they'd like to.
Oh, I think most of this is table to a workshop.
Yeah, all I did was, um, this Saturday at nine thirty, um, we're making the Village Hall building site of the month, historic preservation position, and I would appreciate if we could get, um, at least a couple of, of board members, you maybe, nine thirty.
She's sick.
So we can take a picture with the bodies that, uh.
What's that? Nine thirty.
Nine thirty, Saturday, the seventh.
Judy's green, I call it, she's honest.
I got my hair.
No.
Nine thirty. I'm just cutting, right?
I was just gonna, yeah, I said the seventh, yeah.
That's the museum?
No, the Village Hall, we're gonna put this sign up, site of the month.
Hey, by the way, what's the museum open again, what is it?
It is opening, we are having the fourteenth and the fifteenth, we are having the board man exhibits, um, we're gonna have all the volunteers and members, and then it opens up the next Saturday, the twenty-first, from two to four thirty, to twenty-eighth, two to four thirty, and then September, it's gonna open in straight for the hours, so.
Yeah.
Something else is used to sustain that, or if I have a bigger computer.
I'm thirty-two, I'll be here.
Something else.
I'll make it.
I'll second.
All right.
Carrie.